Enter your participant ID followed by pound. You are in the meeting now. There are nine participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, can everybody hear me? This is Jody.
Everybody know?
Yeah, sorry.
I can.
Yeah, I got the video going with the audio. I was having great difficulty with. Okay, so in the room here, we have Counselor Campbell, Counselor Kaufman, Budget Committee Member Candy Perryman, and Budget Committee Member Sandy Viera. And it looks like we have everybody else online. So I am going to go ahead and start the recording. And I believe that Counselor Kaufman was the Chair last year. So she will start the meeting and then go from there. Let me turn this on. And then I will try to share my screen with folks when we're looking at stuff, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, we are now recording.
Turn the mics on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Declaration under God, liberty, and justice.
All right, roll call. We already did that. Everybody's here. And Mr.--
All right, I'm in position one.
Lieutenant Vander, position two.
Anthony Pagano, position three.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Tammy Kaufman, position five.
Budget position number one, Sandy Viera.
Craig?
I think he lost him.
I don't see Craig up there anymore.
Craig.
Do you have him on? Did you have him on? Sorry.
He was here. And Dave is here, correct?
Yeah.
I see Dave. Position four, Candy Perryman.
Oh, he skipped over Dave. Oh. Okay, we got Dave.
Dave, you're back. No idea what position I am.
Number three. Number three.
Okay, and then it looks like we did lose Craig. So maybe he can--
Right back?
Maybe he can try to--
He's coming over. He's got his bricks out his way over to my house.
You know, I was actually going to suggest that.
So as soon as he gets here, he'll be here.
Okay.
Any additions to the agenda?
I'm sorry, what?
Any additions to the agenda? Hearing done, we'll move on. Election of Budget Officers. Can I get a motion or a nomination for a Chair?
I will-- This is Becky Campbell. I will nominate Candy Kaufman to be the Chair of the Budget Committee.
I'll second that. Sandy Viera.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, then I will call the question on the roll call vote, if you don't mind. Summer Madison.
Yay.
Larry Brennan.
Aye.
Anthony Pagano.
Aye.
Becky Campbell.
Aye.
Tammy Kaufman.
Aye.
Sandy Viera.
Aye.
Craig Chance in yet?
Not yet.
Dave Sanders.
Aye.
Candy Perryman.
Aye.
Okay. Looks like eight, yes?
Yes.
Zero notes, okay. Motion carries. Can I get a nomination for Vice Chair?
I'm only Candy Perryman, Vice Chair.
I was just going to do you.
Sweet, got it.
I will second that nomination.
No, I was not for Secretary. Well, this is hard.
I can call him.
I know you're taking notes. That's okay. So are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing done, I will close the nomination. And we will do a vote. Kaufman, Summer Madison. The motion on the floor is to approve Vice Chair Candace Perryman.
What do you say, Summer?
Uh, yeah.
Larry Brennan.
Aye.
Anthony Pagano.
Aye.
Becky Campbell.
Aye.
Tammy Kaufman.
Aye.
Sandy Viera.
Aye.
Craig Chance.
Aye.
Yay. Dave Sanders.
Aye.
Aye.
Candace Perryman.
Aye.
Now it's nine to zero. All right, so the first order of business is the Urban Renewal Agency Budget. And so technically, we are now in the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee. And for those of you at home, you either got an email with a special budget or it is on page 25 of a big packet.
The packet-- For those of you in the room, it's this one that has the budget page. And for those of you at home, I emailed you a copy of what we're going to look at. And so I'm going to bring that up on the screen.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
I can hear you.
I clicked my mouse on the computer and I locked my sound.
Oh, can you hear us now?
We can hear you.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Okay, yeah. Uh, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
I just don't know how to get back on.
It's pointing to dial in. I dialed in. I want to make sure it's nice.
Go to big mail.
Oh, okay. Okay, can you watch it on the screen? I brought it up on the screen.
All right.
Can you guys see it at home?
I just see a thing saying you are a budget page.
So do I.
Perfect, that's where we're at.
I mean, can you see the line items?
No, all I see is just like you need to click on it type thing.
Hey, Jody, is there any way that you could maybe move that microphone a little closer to yourself than Counselor Kaufman?
It's the phone in the middle of the room.
Okay.
So we'll just try to project. So you do not see my screen even though it says I'm sharing my screen.
We see the screen. And it looks like you've highlighted the URA budget page document.
Yeah, that's--
Can we minimize that? Can I bring the other one up?
Now, do you see something?
We see your page. You're looking your mouse around, but you haven't opened anything yet.
Yeah, I have, actually.
Oh, we don't see that then?
Yeah.
Well, we see you both in the drive.
Interesting.
That is interesting. All right, well, let me try again.
Is your laptop mirroring up there?
Huh?
What you see on your laptop is what it's--
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'll bring it back up.
Yeah, see, you can't-- I don't think you can do that. Once you hit Share, you have to go right to the document, which is already there. Go back a step there.
Oh, it was a URA. Is that one you wanted?
Is there one letting me minimize this? So that I can go to it?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead and do her.
Can you guys pull up page 25 of your budget?
Yep.
Great.
Twenty-five, yep.
So now I'm going to try that.
Yeah, now I can share screen. And no, don't click that one. Click the one that looks like the budget.
That's it.
Okay, it is. I can't see it from here.
Okay, can you guys see that page now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you can. Okay, sorry.
Can you zoom that in just a little bit? Jody, if that's possible?
We got it. Twenty-five, yep.
It's a theater board.
Oh, yeah.
Way better?
Okay. Okay.
Cool.
I'm not sure if you see my little-- They just probably see the red square. That's fine.
Looks great.
Perfect.
Okay, now we'll just go down. Okay, so just as an FYI, when we get to the budget message, which is-- I probably should have put that before this. But I made-- I made no-- Basically made no changes over last year. We just kept it flat. And because we don't-- Because of all the uncertainty of things that are going on in the world, I didn't plan for anything. So if you want to increase or decrease any of this, all this is is a mirror of last year's budget. Or, yeah, last year's budget.
So for those on the Budget Committee that may have followed, I know the Council knows this. We had a housing project come up. And we borrowed money from the city to loan this couple of money to start some housing projects that live at eight units. And I drove by them the other day and they're going up.
Yep.
Where is that at?
In the port, the bottom of the old Sunset property.
Oh, okay.
So I think he's going to put eight units. Was that right?
Pardon?
He's going to do eight units.
Seven or eight, yes.
Yeah, so it was going to be a really good-- They were going to be small, but he was going to try to rent out around eight hundred a month. So that turned out to be a really good opportunity. So we took advantage of that and did that. They didn't get a rare program person at Gold Beach Main Street. So they hired Lindsay Dixon, a local person, to help with that function. It looks like we've budgeted for that again.
Project a little bit more, Counselor Kaufman. Just make sure.
Project a little more, okay? Sorry. And the only thing I see missing on here is we're supposed to have interest income and interest expense. Does that need to be in here or can that go to an amendment?
I was going to make this suggestion when we get to the budget meeting. So I'll just bring it up now that-- Because of all the uncertainty, that I think that we should schedule another meeting, like three months from now, to kind of relook at everything and say, okay, do we need to adjust anything based on revenue that we are not getting or getting? Or do we need to change line items to reduce them? So, yeah, we can do that right now. Or we can add the interest line item. I don't know what the figure is, though.
Right. It's going to be more going out than coming-- More coming in than going out, if I'm correct. Because they were going to pay interest only at first.
Correct.
But when do we pay our interest to the city?
That's what I was saying.
Whenever we want.
I don't-- Well, I mean, yeah, actually, whenever we want, but--
Because they're not going to foreclose on us?
No.
So I think technically we're going to add that in. But I don't think it's a large number. Does anybody have any other ideas or concepts or things you want to ask about for Urban Renewal?
I do not.
No.
Hearing done. Do we want to make that amendment? Or do we just want to--
Just include the interest in and the interest out? Okay. Because we can change that. If we get through the budget tonight and you guys adopt it, we can-- The Council can make a certain amount of changes and that would be under that amount that we can make prior to the adoption. So--
So can I get a motion to approve?
Well, I have a question. So what are all these other pages attached? I mean, we just kind of went over the first page. What do we--
Those are--
I haven't seen them, so.
Those are the pages from last year's budget. And I include them in the budget-- The adopted budget document just so that if somebody picks up the budget, they can go, okay, well, what is Urban Renewal? And when was it adopted?
Oh, okay.
So these are the pages that I just stick in there each year. So that way, we just have kind of a reference for what projects were approved, what could get funded. And then the map of the Urban Renewal boundary. And then that-- The TIF revenue forecast, that goes in there every year, too. It just kind of adds more meat on the bones of the document. So-- And I just gave you a copy of what we had last year, but it would be the same actual documents they would just be for this year. So you saw these last year, I guess, one time, sorry?
Any other questions on Urban Renewal? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the budget as amended?
I still move.
Candy, thanks.
Second.
And who was that?
Dave Sanders.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Sorry.
I'm glad you asked. I would have guessed Larry.
Yeah, me, too.
I thought that was Larry.
All right. And any discussion?
Oh, cool.
Okay, then I'll call the question. Summer Madison.
Aye.
Larry Brennan.
Aye.
Anthony Pagano.
Aye.
Becky Campbell.
Aye.
Tammy Kaufman.
Aye.
Sandy Viera.
Aye.
Craig Chance.
Aye.
Dave Sanders.
Aye.
Candy Perryman.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, now we will leave the Urban Renewal Budget Committee and move into the City Budget Committee. Thankfully, you don't have to leave your seats. And you want to go over your budget message?
Yep, and I'm going to do the screen share again. Now that we do this hotly.
Okay, so for those of you that are new, this is kind of an annoying thing. But we have to-- I have to read this into the record, like verbally read it into the record. So I will try to do that as efficiently as possible. Fiscal year 2021 budget message. Members of the City Council and members of the Budget Committee. This is a quote from General Patton. "All of the real heroes are not storybook combat fighters either. Every single man in this army play a vital role. Don't ever let up. Don't ever think that your job is unimportant. Every man has a job to do and he must do it. Every man is a vital link in the great chain." And obviously, every man includes all of us women, too. "Per the state's local budgeting manual, budget message is a required component of the annual budget and must contain the following. Explaining the budget document, including a brief description of the proposed financial policies for the coming year. Describe the important features of the budget document in connection with the financial policies of the local government. Explain the reasons for changes from the previous year in appropriation and revenue items. And explain the major changes in financial policy. The budget message must be in writing since it is part of the complete budget document and is to be prepared by the executive officer of the district or, in our case, municipality. Explain the budget. The budget is comprised of the following. And this is what is included in the final adopted budget. Typically, you all see all of this. But because this was not a good year, you didn't have all of these pages. But they will be in the final document. Budget calendar. Copy of the required public notice and dates of publication. After adoption by the Council, a copy of the budget resolution, adopting the budget, and the state required reporting forms. Brief explanation of each city fund. That wasn't included in the packet that I sent you. But that is like the general fund, the enterprise funds. And those don't change year to year. So-- Thank you. Brief explanation of each department function and proposed changes for the year. Comprehensive proposed revenue and expenditures for each city fund and department. Supplemental documents for transparency, which include nondepartmental indirect costs and allocations. The 2023 salary schedule, which was most recently updated last month for all of the city positions pursuant to the city's strategic goals. Breakdown of employees by department. FTE status and base wage. And most recent copy of the city's strategic goals. Brief description of the proposed financial policies for the coming year. The budget officer proposes a budget but does not set policy. That is the Budget Committee and Council's responsibility and staff implements those policies. However, personally and as the city administrator, there are standards or policies, if you will, that I hold myself and to and I expect of all city employees. These were part of last year's document, but they are still relevant, probably even more so this year. They are quotes that I have in my office that reflect those standards. President Kennedy said, "And so, my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you. Ask what you can do for your country." A quote attributed to President Teddy Roosevelt. "Complaining about a problem without posing a solution is called whining." And Ron Swanson, if you're familiar with that gentleman, "If you choose a thankless job, you can't be upset when nobody thanks you." Expectations I have for myself and city staff is that we strive to always be good stewards of the public trust and their funds because we are also part of the citizenry that we serve. We provide the highest level of service to our citizens at the lowest reasonable cost. That doesn't mean that we always buy or utilize the cheapest. We buy and utilize the goods and services that give the city the greatest value for their dollars. We put aside some funds for unexpected events and where possible, utilize our own funds to maximize the return on investment since the open market interest is so dismal. And that's even more so now. We strive for transparency in all transactions and reporting and we provide financial information as quickly and efficiently as possible when asked. Government is not a money-making or for-profit business. We collect taxes, fees, and other revenues in order to provide an equal amount of service for those dollars collected. If there's an excess-- There's an excess. It's reserved and saved for a specific stated purpose. We ensure the city-owned property and infrastructure is maintained in good working order to maximize the useful life of property and assets. Regarding the proposed financial policies for fiscal year 2021, because of the great uncertainty surrounding the COVID-19 crisis, the department heads and I felt it would be prudent to keep the budget as flat as possible, which is what I proposed, and to not consider any type of capital projects other than those that were already underway. So capital projects usually involves public work. So Will and I had talked about it and we don't have any plans for any kind of capital projects for this year just because we don't know what's going to go on. Since mid-March, things have changed on an almost daily basis and mostly not for the better. We still really have no idea how this crisis is going to play out economically. Given that uncertainty, we should plan to hunker down for the long haul. Describe the important features of the budget document in connection with the financial policies of the city. The introductory section in the budget document for each of the city funds explains the purpose for the fund, any proposed changes from the prior year, and reasons for those changes. I believe those explanations are driven by the policies listed. Explain the reasons for changes from the previous year in appropriation and revenue. The introductory section in the budget document for each of the city funds explains the purpose of the fund, any proposed changes, and reasons for those changes. We discuss each fund individually and review the introductory sections prior to reviewing the proposed appropriations. Due to the current uncertainty, we are proposing to stay as flat as possible until we have a better idea of what lays ahead. Explain the major changes in financial policy. Again, it's not my role to set or change a policy. I can only make suggestions. This would be the opportunity for the Budget Committee and the Council to discuss any changes in the city's financial policies for the next year or for the future. As a budget officer, last year I had two major proposals for 1920. One of them, the water infrastructure project, was funded by Business Oregon through the state-- Through IFA. This would be the capital project that is currently in the works. So we're going ahead with that. And it may actually end up being okay because when we did the wastewater plant, that was right when the recession hit and we actually were able to get better prices on things. But depending on the availability of supplies, that could change. So-- The other proposal dealt with street maintenance. And we've talked about this several times, but I wanted to bring it up again. This was the statement that was in last year's budget. "In the past few years, we've discussed an alternative slash additional funding source for street maintenance. That discussion began as a process with the Council that eventually resulted in a written and digital citizen survey. Based on the survey results, we refer to fuel tax measure to the voters in November of 2018. It failed by a wide margin despite the survey findings. The proposal in the budget is the one I originally made in 1718, which was a flat fee to be collected monthly with the utility billing. The revenues are shown in the street and covered repair. That was what was proposed last year. That did not happen because we decided that we were going to try to put the gas tax back on the ballot again. The Council went through that process. It was going to be on the May ballot, but then all of the coronavirus stuff hit. We pulled it off of the May election because of that. All of us thinking that probably this would be over in three to four months, and it's not. So we're obviously still experiencing the crisis. And by all indicators, it appears that we will be living with the situation for at least the next six to 12 months. So the question that, as far as policy goes, is, do you want to address the gas tax issue again? If you want to address it this year, we have until mid-August in order to get it onto the November 3 ballot? Or do we just want to say, forget it? Let's wait until next year because there's too many unknowns? During the uncertain time, the city will continue to offer service friendship and assistance whenever and wherever we are able. As General Patton said, each of us are vital links in the chain. Each of us has a vital role to play and no job is unimportant, especially now. I want to thank each of you for your service. I appreciate the vital link that you are in our city chain. We've been through some bad times before. And as long as we work together, I know that we will get through these current tough times." I'll conclude with a quote from the great 20th century philosopher Barry Mallow. "In this high-minded world we live, sometimes we have to take a break. Sometimes we have to bend until the good times come again." It may be a while, but-- Good times will come again. Thank you.
And now we get to talk about the budget.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have in the packet and then the information that I sent to the-- To the Counselors via email. As you recall, the-- The Governor, through several of the executive orders, allowed jurisdictions like ours to exceed the statutory requirement to have a budget adopted by June 30. That's why, actually, why we're here tonight. And so, just to confirm with the Assessor's Office, you know, the process and what it is that we're doing. I shared a copy of the letter. Basically, it's just outlining the executive order, what section of it that says that we have the authority through her executive order to go past June 30 for this adoption process. I told them that I anticipated that we would be adopting the budget at the August 3 meeting. We need to do it as soon as reasonably practical, practicable, which I believe that we can meet that. So just wanted to give you a copy of that letter that went to the Assessor's Office.
Okay, we typically go through this page by page. Would you guys like to start it that way tonight?
Sure.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and I have some questions from Counselor Kaufman that she had sent me previously. So when we get to those, I will answer those questions when we get to them.
It's like the first page of interest is page five with the salary schedule.
Yeah, that was the-- Every three years, we do-- I do. Every five-- Salary-- Salary schedule. This is the schedule that I have proposed for the next three years based on the salary study that I did. If you would like to see the methodology, I'd be happy to share that with everyone in the spreadsheet, but on the bottom, it says, "The study was prepared utilizing the following information." Wage data that we get from the state of Oregon, which includes private and public employers, and that was for our region, for southwestern Oregon, Coos, Curry, and Douglas. Some positions, because of the nature of them, like specifically the wastewater treatment plant and also the police officers, I have to go a little bit wider because obviously there's not private sector wastewater plant operators other than like in huge cities. Federal wage data, which is locally adjusted for our region, was also utilized. I put in, when you had me do the salary study for the city administrator position about three years ago, I believe it was, you also wanted demographic data so that we were comparing counties and cities of a similar size and a similar median income. And so, I put in there the cities and the compared counties and how they compare to us in Curry County as far as, not just population, but like their, what their median income. And then also salary data from specific cities that are in the same range as us and also the same median. Because a city of 2,000 near Portland is obviously different than a city of 2,000 in Curry County. So, the ones that we utilized were Bandon, Kokil, Heinz, John Day, Myrtle Creek, Myrtle Point, Reed's Port, and Rogue River. For the PD, we used the state wage data, the Rogue River data, the federal data, Curry and Klamath Counties, and the cities of Brookings, Bandon, Kokil, Lincoln City, Myrtle Point, Myrtle Creek, Primeville, Reed's Port, and Rogue River. So, that's the methodology, the Reader's Digest version, but I'd be happy to share the spreadsheets if anybody's interested.
I was pleasantly surprised to see the median income of Gold Beach and Curry County compared to some of the others. I mean, it's... It's not the lowest, that's a good thing.
That's household income, isn't it?
It just, the data that I get, it just says median income, so. I don't know if that's like family of four, family of two, or whatever, it just says median income.
Yeah, I think it's average household.
Yeah.
No problem. Which in Curry County is one or two. Any questions or comments on the salary study on this table?
No.
Okay, then we will move on.
I'm good with it.
And feel free to, I don't know if you guys have the option to type into the chat, I'll try to remember to look at it.
So, the next page would be page eight? This one's a little more confusing, but Jody was excellent with pointing it.
Can I start with a question? Page eight, PERS UAL. I know what the PERS is, what's the UAL?
Unfunded actuarial liability. That is a figure that PERS assigns to each PERS employer based on the size you are, how many people have retired in the past. There's an unfunded liability for previous PERS people, so it's not necessarily people that retire from the city of Gold Beach, it's just people that have retired in the PERS system that it's unfunded. So, like, they don't anticipate, they have to have enough revenue to get those people to life, to death, basically, what they anticipate is going to be. So, each employer is assigned a UAL figure. We used to have it within the personnel stuff, but the reality is that's not a benefit that our employees get. So, it kind of skewed the personnel cost because it made it seem like the employees were getting something more. No, that's actually just a bill that PERS sends to us, that's our slice of the UAL pie. So, and it did go up slightly last year. And it does that. Every two years, they relook at it because it's based on what the returns are on the investment pool.
Thank you.
How about the PERS itself for people? Did that increase this year in this budget or not?
Yes, they usually go up every... The state doesn't buy any of them, so they do a two-year budget and yes, the PERS costs went up for us. And they are... They're horrific. And the bad thing about PERS is that it's basically a deal with the devil. Once you're a PERS employer, you can never not be a PERS employer. And so, depending on what the makeup of your employees are, you pay different percentages. I'm trying to be... Okay, our current general service, which is like folks in the front office or...
Hello? I'm receiving music.
Okay. Right now, our current rates, and this is through 22, I believe. General service is 15.71. PERS, police and fires, 15.71. The new tier that they have is called OPSRP, which that's an acronym for something. General service is 8.4 and police and fire is 13.03. Now, there's a 6% that's added on top of that for all of those, so. So, for like tier one employees like myself, it's pretty high.
The 6% is the employee portion that the city has agreed to pay?
Yes. And they suck that right out of our checking account, so we have no... We don't get to like send them a check or say we're not going to pay.
So, we went back to the macro view of this page, just basically, if you want to try to explain it to me too.
The nondepartmental?
Yeah.
Okay, basically, the nondepartmental are, and there's kind of a crib sheet on the bottom, but direct costs are things that like, okay, the wastewater plant uses chemicals, the water treatment plant uses chemicals. That's not something the city hall office uses. So, that's a direct cost easily attributable to public works. Other costs like insurance, the copiers, mail, those are all things that all of the city departments utilize in different fashion. You know, some use them more, some use them less. So, the things that are attributed to all city services, we have in this nondepartmental and then it's broken down by the departments that basically receive money. And if you'll notice that three of the debt service funds are in there and the reason for that is that there is a small portion of the costs are taken from them because there is front office work that is related to those debt service funds. But mostly, it's the general fund, the street funds, and then the enterprise funds, the
Any questions on this fund, how this fund was figured out? Or anything on this page, gentlemen?
Could you repeat that, please?
Any other questions on page eight? Okay, let's move on. Page nine is explaining the sources of revenue.
That's just, public safety is all in the general fund and those are the things that pay for those for public safety.
Any questions on that page?
No.
All right, let's move on to page 11.
Okay, so, again, I tried to keep the budget fairly flat. Things that, I increased the property taxes just slightly because that, we do get a slight increase and because of our population base, we do actually do a pretty good collection on our... We usually don't have a very high percentage of non-collection on it. Most people pay their property taxes, so I don't see a big hit there. There's other revenue line items that could potentially be. You'll note that the room tax, I reduced it. Part of that is that we just don't know. And I don't have, obviously, I don't have the July figures in yet, but as you all have seen, there's plenty of our towners here, even though we are doing zero advertising right now. So, I don't know if it's going to end up being as bad as I think it might be because people are still traveling. But I would rather undershoot it than expect to get more revenue and then not. Because again, we don't know what's going to happen in the next six to 12 months, so I was trying to be conservative. So, if you notice that things have been reduced, that is why, because I'm trying to project what I think might be reduced.
Well, you shouldn't have gone up in the liquor tax because everybody says everybody's drinking more.
I, that actually, yeah. The liquor and the weed tax, they said, was the one that we could actually expect to go up, so.
We are aware all the taxes should go up too, but I don't think you've collected very much yet. You have two pretty busy shops now.
Now, yes, because we get the money quarterly and...
State does it.
We just got a quarterly payment and we should be getting one for the June 30 any time now. So, when you look at the period actual, that's through the end of May, so any revenue that came in in June or now is not going to be reflected in that current year actual. I did for, and this was a command decision I made, which you certainly have the authority to do this, but as far as the general fund, I opted to not have any transfers out to like building reserve, non-insured losses, the parks reserve. I proposed it as no transfers out this year. Again, I would suggest that in three to four months, we get together again and do a deep dive on where we're at with revenue and expenditures and maybe if it looks like things are okay, we can go ahead and do... We usually do not big transfers, you know, it's less than $20,000, but I just felt like maybe this year, maybe we better just pull it off, just in case.
I was under the impression that the TLT totals and TLT numbers were at historical averages even with the travel ban in place?
I don't know. I mean, definitely May, April and May weren't, you know, because we didn't have any, but July seems to be, I don't know what the July figures are yet, so I would say though that they're probably going to be at or higher. We do, when we get to the promo section, I can talk about it a little bit more, but there are three concerns, three hotels of concern to me that their revenue is down drastically over the past two years. And I actually have talked to one of the hotel operators about, you know, what's different because they're the only ones that seem to be having an issue. So, I don't know if that's a recording issue or if they truly are not having as much traffic. Because that could be possible because there's some maintenance issues, but that is actually affecting our bottom line, those hotels. So, it's a little disconserving.
Thank you.
When you haven't audited in years?
No, I'm actually, well, the people that have done our audit for like the last seven years, that's not a service they provide. You have to go find somebody else to do it. Our previous auditors, that was part of what they did, but the current one's done. But the one hotel in particular, I may actually do that. If it's not hideously expensive, I may actually do it because it's...
So, you still do like three a year, I think? Probably need to go back to doing that to keep you honest.
Yeah.
It's good for them to know.
Well, it's just, I have to see what the cost is because it used to be just part of the cost of the audit, but if it's going to cost us like, you know, $10,000, I don't know. So, I'll look into the cost of it.
It has to be a formally agency that would do the audit because it's a state and city mandate for the taxes, for the transit tax?
Typically, it's like an audit firm that would do that. Yeah, like a CPA firm. I have the ability through the ordinance to request records and I have done that with certain people to verify it, so usually that's enough. If I send them a letter saying I have the ability to look at your records, they usually kind of gets our attention. People don't like the audit. Who has their hand up? Sorry. Anthony?
I've got a question now. On the Heinz, this is Anthony's party, on the Heinz and forfeitures on city duty portion, how come we're so low on that compared to what we budgeted in prior years? What is that exactly?
Part of it, and actually, we're actually way, way back up now. Part of it was that we had some folks that were gone in the police department, so we had several months where we didn't have as many officers. And then for March, April, and part of May, I was not having, I was not having the police department working traffic as much as they normally did. I only asked them to if it was egregious violations to pull people over. Once we went into phase two, they went back to their normal, normal traffic stop procedures and we actually, we actually seized somebody's motorcycle the other day because they were going over 100, so.
Through town?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so we have their, we have their motorcycle in impound, so they've actually been working a lot of traffic, so by the end of June, that figure probably will have gone up more. But it was a combination of different factors and I should say that in prior year, 16, 17, that 200,000 actually was not, that was not 200,000. That was, we had to book old receivable that were uncollected revenue, basically. So, it looks like, oh my gosh, we made 200,000 that year, but really, almost 140 of that was old, dead, which was sent to a collection agency and we were collecting on it. But, so that year really was more like, you know, more like 80,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good question.
Any other questions on this page? Comments? Off to page 12.
This is one where Councilor Kaufman had a question about the insurance and liability line item. You will see that it has drastically increased. Unfortunately, that is due to a catastrophic workers' comp claim that affected the entire city-county insurance pool and it will affect our rates for the next three years to the tune of about 40% more increase. And if after that three years, we don't have, our claims are lower, then it won't go back to what it was, but it will be lower, but for the next three years, we can enjoy a 40% increase in our workers' comp rates, so. Yeah, it really is. But it's really great to know that Gold Beach has affected, has affected the entire city-county insurance pool. That was really great, yeah. And then some of the insurance stuff is that there's this greater risk now, like the cyber policy stuff, that there's been a lot of loss, so. But some things have gone down and the good news is that when our, we had a risk management thing with CIS about, it was right before the fire stuff hit, there are some things that we were actually really low on, which was good, so. So, overall, the city is safe, it's just... It's just one catastrophic incident gave us a big giant black eye that we'll have for a very long time. And I think that the line item 104241, which is the IT software, that went down, I'm proposing that to go down a little bit this year, because last year, we had to purchase a couple of new servers for the police department. And I, we won't have to be doing that kind of capital purchases here, so it should be able to go down. And then again, on that page, I didn't propose any transfers out. We can certainly change that if you want, or we can revisit that later.
I have a question.
Yep.
On line 1041235, looks like we still have $1,000 in the mayor travel line item?
Correct.
I thought that the council had removed his travel ability.
This is for the July to June, and that was through his term, which ended in November. So I tried to reduce the travel budget by the July to November portion. That was my reasoning.
And I see that councils went down too, but it's predominantly legal Oregon cities, right?
Yeah, because they're not having, yeah, they're having
Yeah, I thought I figured everything was Zoom meetings or whatever, so less travel.
Could save us a little money.
In most of the travel line items, I reduced it, because at least for the, like I said, for the foreseeable future, everything's online.
Makes sense.
Okay, anything else on 12? Move to 13. Or we've got municipal court and city management.
Okay, I didn't, I don't think I proposed many changes here. Again, tried to keep it flat. The personal services went down, because we did have a retiree last year. I tried to reduce the materials and services. I actually tried to cut some expenses. And I told the department heads that too, that we need to try to kind of suck it up this year and reduce expenses if we can, just to see what's going to happen.
So the admin assistance support went down to zero?
Yeah, Dee retired, and we didn't actually replace her. We just kind of redistributed her duties.
For whom did we, in 10-42-215, uniforms, 200 bucks?
That's the judge, in case he has to replace his robe.
Yeah, makes sense. Very cool.
Come on, Joey, you can make it one.
This gets tricky, please, please. Plus, it's slippery material, this is not very good either.
This is Anthony again. On line 1054, 10-54-111, how come we're seeing special potential for the sergeant paid compared to the rest of the officers?
That's based on that salary study that I talked about. So regionally, that's, regionally, and according to other cities of a similar size, that's the range that sergeants are in.
So the sergeant is more than the chief? I noticed that, but I figured that was just unique of our department, or including overtime, that chief doesn't
I understand that the special increase over the rest of the other people compared to what their training budget was.
And I would agree with that. And that was, again, based on the salary study, that according to the comparison with other similar cities, our sergeant scout salary was not comparable.
Has the union met yet and negotiated?
Pardon?
Have you met with the union yet and negotiated?
Yes. And they had, they had only three very small requests. It was actually quite, quite painless.
Any other question on page 13?
Are you ready to move on to page 14?
I am.
Yes.
Yeah, I am. Yes.
Page 14 it is, rest of the police department, including materials and services.
I did reduce the travel and training budget, not as much in the PD, because we do have Sarah that as of yet, as of now, is set to go to the academy April 3rd. So, which I don't think we actually pay, we have to pay the travel there, but that's part of what the, when tickets are written statewide, part of that money goes to support the police academy. So tickets that we pay right here, a portion of that goes to support the police academy.
Did you say April 3rd?
I'm sorry, August 3rd. Yeah.
I started June. Just had a very backup.
I don't think I've proposed much changes for the fire department. It's about what it, it's about what it was last year, slight change.
A question on that, the PPE equipment, I mean, if their callouts get, so that they're getting called, like the cities, to virus patients, I mean, that might need to go up, maybe, right?
We have a stock, and, are you talking about fire?
Yeah.
Well, and police, actually. But Chief Krieger, in fact, I was just talking to him yesterday about this. He, he has a source, a direct source for PPE that, so that way, we don't have to go through the state channels. Although the state of Oregon is better than some states. But, but we have our own source. So he feels like even given, if things blow up worse than what they are, we're okay.
I mean, there is a good chance in Curry County, since it hasn't really hit here, but it will.
And then we have all the Californians coming here with their cooties.
Yes.
Such optimism, you guys. I listened to the county the other day, it's not coming here.
On line 1054293, uniforms.
Yep.
Can you, so we went, we jumped from year 2016, 17 at nominal fee, and then we're up to 9,000 currently for this current fiscal year.
I believe this year, we had to replace several vests. Oh, they have a, they have a shelf ride? Yeah. So I think that's why it was, it was so high this year.
And the year before?
Possibly, because
Every time you have a changer, we have to buy a new one too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, because each individual, you don't have to get it?
They rarely, yeah, they rarely fit, you know, yeah, of course, we get the gear back, but rarely does a vest fit a new person.
Yeah. They're sweat collectors.
Yeah. Yeah, I would want a new one. I would want somebody else, like, how well did you take care of this? I mean, this is my life, so I want to know. I was just curious with the cost.
Is there anything going on everywhere? I feel like we might want to up that a little bit.
Oh. Well, I'm sure they wouldn't mind.
That's just my thought, but Joey, wasn't there a new vest that they were looking at to upgrade it? A new safety one? And I mean, the regulations mandated that something be updated?
And that may be why the 9,000, because that's through the end of May. So if they purchased those new vests this year, it would have been that. So if they, if they'd been talking about them recently. And I'm ashamed to admit that I have a vague recollection of a conversation about vests, so.
Yeah.
That was the only question I had left on that page.
Because normally, the uniforms is basically just shirts and pants. And then, you know, like gear belt and stuff like that. But the big ticket stuff is the vests, yeah.
Makes sense.
You did a pretty big jump on the fire association, 1055215. Are you anticipating a lot more callouts?
That's what it was last year. I left it the same.
What number line, Ms. Colwell?
Oh, I see, 215, 1055215. Went from 37, 580 to 33 to 29 to 24.
Those are actuals, yeah. But we had budgeted 40,000 for the current fiscal year.
Good point.
Sorry. I guess it ended June 30th, right? Well, for these purposes, yeah, we're still in that, we're still at that point today. So yeah, so the current year is what we had, we, I had proposed 40. And so I just kept it the same. Because there should be, again, this is through May, that 24,000 that it's at right now, there'll be one more quarter's payment that's going to show up for June. So that figure is probably going to be more like 30. It's usually, I want to say it's usually about $7,000 or $8,000 per quarter. So, so it's close, close to 40. So I just kept it there.
And just to be clear, that's, that's the
The callout?
Callout.
They get a stipend.
Yeah, right. Yeah. They get, they get so much for showing up for Monday practice, and then they get so much for showing up for each actual call. And I want to say, I want to say the practice is more to encourage them to come and practice, if I could be wrong on that one. One is like $10, one is like $8.
I think we raised it like three years in a row. Anything else on page 14? All right, page 15 it is, the end of the fire department.
Oh, Sergeant Miller said the vest that we are looking at will stop at AR 15223.
Oh, very good.
Oh, good.
And yikes, if that's even a thing that needs to be
I'm sorry, Joey, that was the best they have or the best they were looking at?
He said the best we are looking at will stop at AR 15 Bullet 223.
And will their budget of the 6,000, will that be enough to cover those with their officers?
Let me ask, Don.
Sorry.
Oh, not sure. Chief, he says he's not sure the chief is looking at the new vests. So if we need to do more, we, again, we can, at that quarter, look up. And I'd like to, if it's okay with you guys, since we're all here tonight, if we could schedule that, that quarter look up. Maybe it can be the council meeting night, so it doesn't have to be an extra meeting or whatever. But I just really think that, you know, like three to four months from now, we really need to kind of
So looking at Sergeant Miller, put on, there's several of the officers' vests have expired. Does that mean that the cost that I was questioning, the 9,000, that was replacing those, and we're still looking at the new vests, right? That's not part of this current fiscal year actual?
Yeah, I was thinking that included some vests, not all vests. So I'll have to, I'll have to pull up that line item and see what, what's in there.
I have a question. Does the chief diligently pursue grants for equipment like that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we get, we usually get, we don't get a lot of them. I want to say we usually get like one every two years or something that we get from the feds, although lately, the feds have not been as generous. But yes, we do.
So on, moving on to page 15, on emergency services, what's the 8,000 in the current year, 1058240 line?
That was stuff that we had purchased related to COVID, and we did get some of that. We got $19,000 back from the state, and we will be able to get more before the end of the year. So that was stuff related to COVID.
Didn't you have like other municipalities? Never mind.
I didn't see any changes in the park budget. Were you going to install porta potties, and should we be budgeting for that?
You know, I want to say that last year, we had talked about it, and that's why we increased it to the 20, remember? Because we talked about it last year. So maybe on that line item, 265, we should leave that at 20. Because we ended up
What's the line item?
This is on page 15, and it's going to be 1064265 Building and Grounds. And the 20,000 included us doing porta potties last year. We ended up opening the bathrooms for part of the year. But I think right now, the porta potties are running us about 400 a month. So
Okay, good. Larry, Joey, because you guys are echoing quite bad, I mean, it seems like the people on computers are very plain, but you guys are really echoing bad. So when you refer to something, would you call out the section number like you just did, if you're sure to follow?
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at an $8,000 increase for line item 1064265 Building and Grounds to cover porta potties.
Just put that back at 20K. Leave it what it was this year. Let me see if there's something I can do with the audio.
So what are you going to change to balance that out?
Hopefully, we'll find something. I mean, we, if all fails, we can drop contingency.
Yeah. The contingency is 40,000 right now.
And if you get a COVID grant, that could cover it.
Yep.
Because that would be the primary reason you would be putting in porta potties.
Exactly. And that's, that's why we get to, makes sense. Yep.
Any other questions on page 15? Comments?
You know what, Larry? I'm going to, I'm going to try to turn off the mics in the room and see if that will make a difference on the echo, okay?
That's probably what it is, right?
All right, let me turn off the mics, and we'll see if it sounds any better.
All right.
Does anybody need a bathroom break or a stretch break?
I'm not shy, I'll just get up and stretch. I'm surprised Sandy hasn't popped out.
I was, I was just trying to
Hey, everybody, stand up and stretch. All right, can you hear us better now? Are we echoing less?
Sound like it.
Does it, does it sound a little bit better?
All right, we know the problem.
I can hear you fine.
Okay, maybe
Does it sound better?
Yeah, maybe it was picking up the speakers.
All right, let's move on to page 16, unless there's somebody that wants something on 15.
Okay, for Will's department, oh, let me just go back to the park real quick. He is going to be replacing the entrance signs for Buffington Park, and he included money in that, in his, in what he had me include in his budget. And then Counselor Kaufman had a question about, later on, but it's related. Parks Reserve showed 46K. That had to do with Mr. Mun Yon. That was his bequest to the city. So that money was just, I just transferred the money into the parks. But the, there was a caveat put on the money from him that it had to be used for the tennis courts or for Kid Castle. So, which is fine, because then whatever money we would have put there, we'll just put somewhere else. So. Okay. So for the street department, the big news in the street department that Will wanted me to pass along. He's on vacation this week, by the way. Is that the backhoe is on its last legs and is, we're just like, like giving it resuscitation almost weekly. So in each of the enterprise funds, water and sewer, there is a 25,000 capital outlay. When I had said we're not going to do any capital outlay projects, this is just replacing equipment though. Because we can't live without the backhoe. So each of the three funds will contribute 25K towards the new backhoe. And then the SRS money this year for vehicle will also be for the backhoe. And they are currently looking at John Deere because the cat parts are getting too hard to get. Where the John Deere ones are easier to get in America. So that's, I mean, they haven't decided yet what they're going to get. But the, the cat ones are getting harder and more expensive to get. And Will's concerned with all of the uncertainty in the world right now that, that we're really not going to be able to get parks. So, so that's the big, for the street fund, that's his big project. They're also going to be doing a small paving project on Cold Iron Hill sometime this year. And that's related to stormwater. The hill is not configured very well as far as the stormwater. That was something that was already in the works. And then the, the SCA money that, with the grant that was approved last year down by Riley Creek, that won't be happening like anytime now. And probably the only good thing about school being out is that it's not going to disrupt the school. So we had, we had pushed to try to get it done in the summertime, but now it's not such a big push. But it'll be done this calendar year. The state gas tax, I did reduce that slightly, just simply because the price of gas is lower. And, and I don't know, but the flip side is there's a whole lot of people traveling. So, so I don't know.
There's a lot of people not traveling too. A lot of people are not commuting to work.
That's true. Right, but we don't have that much commuting.
Well, the state gas taxes.
Oh, the statewide, yeah. So, so I reduced it by 10,000 just because I really do not know. And that's another reason why I would like to relook at this in, in a quarter. Because by that time, I will have seen, most of the money that we get from the state for different things is on a quarterly basis. So by that time, we'll have a little bit better idea of what, if, what if any reduction in revenue we'll have on state money. Everything else, I think I left just about the same. Will did reduce a couple of line items, just saying that they, they have projects that they're not anticipating for this year.
Any questions or comments on page 16?
No.
Off to page 17.
The street construction and repairs, that was a combination of just normal patching and stuff that we do, but also the, the Cold Iron Hill that I was talking about. Depending on the price of asphalt and if we can pony up with maybe the county, we may do a little, a little more curbing on some other roads, but that's just kind of if. I did not propose any transfer to the culvert reserve this year because we don't know how much street gas tax revenue we'll have. If it looks like it's going to stay about the same, then we can certainly transfer the money later.
Any comments or questions on 17?
No.
To page 18, water utility fund.
Okay, Will's notes for water utility. They're going, staff is going to be painting the exterior of the intake office. He only estimates that to be about $2,500. Contract services, 2240 to 95, which is on the bottom of page 18. We're proposing reservoir inspection dive. And that is related to, related to the water project. We have to show IFA that we're, you know, doing the things that we're supposed to be doing. Again, the back, the cooperative backhoe purchase, a portion of that money is coming from this fund.
May I ask why you didn't increase revenue?
Because I don't know. We, this is the other thing that we're waiting to see is that, okay, the couple of months that the hotels were not as busy, the commercial water rate is higher than the residential. So while people were at home, we didn't have a huge reduction in the amount of water produced and sold. But we, Will and I haven't had a chance to really look at, was there a difference in the amount of commercial water sold versus residential water? So I, I just felt like to be conservative, let's just leave it at what we budgeted for this year. Because heaven forbid if we have another shutdown. Because we don't know.
Your 11th a month rate is almost right on and your outside is over. The year-to-date numbers.
This is.
2237, 200 and 2237, 210, inside and outside water sales. We're at $448,000 through May. And we budgeted 450 and for outside, we're 158,000. And we budgeted 150.
So, you know, it could be that we're not going to experience anything. And certainly right now, we have lots of people in town. But I just felt like I would rather just be conservative and say, okay, we're just going to say what we budgeted for this year.
That's reasonable.
And again, when we look at it in a quarter, we'll have a better idea because we will have gotten through summer and starting into fall. So, and then I can have Kim do a, do like a quarters worth of water sold by account type. And we can see, is, has there, was there any change?
Line 2240, 119. So that's a person, I assume, and it went down from what it is?
Yes, and that was, we had a new hire last year. And so the person that previously had that position was at a higher rate of pay. And so even though we have the new salary schedule, that person is still.
Or still?
Yeah. Justin went to work for ODOT last summer.
And then 2240, 265, building and grounds. Oh, it looks more like the actual than whatever the budget was last year.
Yeah, and I believe that Will had, had planned something last year for the water plant that didn't, either it happened and didn't cost as much or he didn't need it done. Because he asked for that line item to be reduced, let me see what he says. Yeah, he doesn't specifically mention it, but. I'm thinking whatever plan he had had did not, he didn't end up doing it.
Any other questions on page 18 or comments? Then we're off on page 19.
Okay, the 2241, 295, contract services, that was reduced because of some of the engineering work that was, needed to be done for the fiscal year that just ended is over. So that, that went down to just basic, like regular, normal year engineering. And some of that money, we did recoup on the IFA loan. Because we had to do pre-engineering before we got the loan. But once we got the loan, then we were reimbursed for some of the costs that we had expended on the project prior to the loan.
Are we knowing balance? The very bottom line, water utility funds, and I get it numbered.
I, I don't have the.
Beginning fund balances.
The beginning and ending fund balances in here. These are just the sheets that come out of the cell. So, so that's just looking at, you know, just strictly the revenue and expenditure in, in those line items.
Any other questions or comments on this page? We'll move on to page 20, sewer utility.
Okay, sewer utility, Will's notes for that. Again, the backhoe. Okay, it doesn't look like he has anything specific planned for the sewer fund.
Pretty much like prior year.
Yeah. System construction and replacement, he reduced to 25K. And he just says, just reduce it to 25. So evidently the INI work that they thought.
Which line item is that?
That is 2340, 530, and it's on page 21, system construction replacement.
We're not on page 21.
Oh, we're not on page 21? No, you're, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm like, no, we're on page 21. You're dropping it.
She's pulling a fast one on us, that was.
I'm a watcher.
I was too, Joey, don't worry.
Oh, sure, whatever, Anthony. Okay, and then again, sewer charges, I left him exactly what they were this year. Just, just because we don't, we don't know what's going to be happening. If we get more revenue in, great. If not, we won't. I prefer to under, underdo revenue.
So are we going to really go to 21 now? All right, anybody have anything else on 20? Then 21, Joey's already previewed the capital.
Yeah, evidently INI repair, Will didn't feel like we needed as much on the INI repair. So, because he said reduce it to 25.
Not weaken as much.
Evidently not. Oh, I, here it is. INI is coming down from 60K. We are not proposing any large repair projects, just spot fixes and manual work as discovered in the system. Because I had told him, let's, you know, let's try to hunker down, so. Because we did do a couple of small projects the last couple of years. We did one on Leith and, I want to say one on Eighth Street. But they're just, they're just planning day-to-day.
Anything else on 21? Ah, we're moving on to the exciting stuff, community promotion fund. I think we ought to take a five-minute break, is anybody disagree?
Negative.
All right, let's take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break, everybody.
Come back at 6:45, so 6:40.
And we're still live, so.
Yeah, we're still live, don't do any errors.
Hot mics, hot mics, everybody. So are we coming back at 6:40 or 6:25?
6:40, I don't have my glasses on, I think I see.
To the other one.
Can I use the secondary water stream back here?
Yes, go right ahead. 6:41. There you go. Kevin, I'm going to mute you guys.
Yes, we're, hold it up. I can see you, I can see everybody on there. Yeah, I can hear one, thank you.
41 to your, oh, nevermind. You haven't eaten? Now that the air conditioner's been blowing on it?
Air conditioner what?
Now that the air conditioning's been blowing on it.
Oh, oh. Can you heat it up for it?
Yeah.
No?
That's fine. How you feeling? Do you have rushing water?
I do not.
Gary. What's in that?
I think it was.
No.
And we can use this one. You guys used to have glue right there.
Well, we took it away because people packed it off.
And Anthony's the one that uses this bathroom now that it's plugged.
Oh.
No, that's the headlamp.
What did I put the hand sanitizer and all that? I had it there and then I moved it. Oh, right here. I love this spray stuff. Well, you could find all the, you know, after I was doing the, the couple of outlets at your house. And I was fussing with them, so it was like charred copper nailing me everywhere. I went and put it on, I was like, ooh, ha! It's now very thick. Because I don't like, I don't like gel. I never have it, so like the whole hand sanitizer gel stuff just grosses me out. Yeah, so I, I like this liquid stuff. And it dries.
I agree with you, it's a good way to find.
Yeah, really good way.
But it's the best stuff gets rid of the germs.
Oh, yeah. Actually, you know, I get this, my brother gets it too. So it's, we think it's actually my dad's Agent Orange exposure. We get this like sun allergy and we'll get, once we get a good tan for the year, then it doesn't affect us. But the first few times out in the sun, we'll get all these little bumps on our arms. And they itch like the dickens. I mean, you are just scratching yourself just practically raw and you just can't stop. So then what I do is I'll actually, you know, after the initial scratches and stuff, and then I'll just go rubbing alcohol. And it burns, but it's like, oh, it burns so good. You know, it just, because it dries it out too, but it's just.
so good. You know, because it dries it out too, but it's just, it kind of helps, kind of scratch that itch, actually, that burning.
Okay. Okay, we ready to start again?
Yep.
Let's do it.
Switch glasses?
I'm ready.
Yay!
You guys can unmute yourselves. I muted everybody, so just, so we didn't listen to your conversations. But feel free to unmute yourself. Okay.
All right, so we're all on the same page. We are on page 22, transient lodging tax, our community promotion fund. This one usually takes a lot of time, so why don't you start, Jody?
Okay, so I reduced it, the proposed, just because I, that was a wild, wild guess. I don't know if there really is going to be a reduction. We don't know. I muted Lyrica. So I don't know. I mean, maybe we'll come in higher. I don't know. You could, going through.
You reduced it by what?
Well, I proposed, for this year's proposed budget, we were saying 330, which you can see at the May revenue, that would be through April. So that's, so there's still May and June that are not in there. We were at 237. So.
But it would be kind of a stretch to expect another 91,000 to come in for those last two months.
Yeah, so we're not going to come in at the current budget, which was 330. So I said 250 because at the time of the budget, it was at 237. So I thought, okay, we're going to put it at 250. Hopefully, it'll come in higher than that, but that's, that's what it is.
But we've also saved money on advertising, right? So it kind of, the revenue's lower, but we haven't been advertising as much?
That's true, but there are some things that, that we were already over on before the COVID came, so which that was kind of good anyway. So this will be one that we'll have to do for April. I'll have, April, I said it again. For August, I'll have to do a resolution to change some of the revenue line items here. For next year, I did propose to reduce a lot of stuff, just because I think that I don't know. I just, I don't think that while this stuff's going on, we should be trying to lure people here. They're, I mean, they're coming already, but I just don't think we should be advertising and encouraging people to spread cooties.
How much did the DC staff personnel go down?
Yeah, when it's
It's been closed for forever.
They haven't reduced their salaries?
No, no, they're on admin, they're on admin leave.
Because they're going to pay?
Yeah, because the thing with government is that if we lay people off, we're what's called self-insured. So we have to pay to unemployment. So I would rather keep people on the payroll and get something out of them than have to just cut a check to the state of Oregon. So, so they've been on admin leave since March. And that's part of the money that we were able to recover from the state. And we continue to be able to, at least through December. I don't know what's going to happen after December, but we, virtually all the money that we got was related to emergency services and the visitor center, the 19,000 that we've recovered so far.
So can I assume that you're anticipating money for their base salary out of COVID? Federal money?
Maybe. It, mostly it was my time. It was like time that, because the, it had to be things that were not budgeted for. And the time that I had to spend doing COVID stuff and still doing COVID stuff, I'm not getting my regular work done, so that's unanticipated stuff. So they actually, I was kind of surprised if they went along with it. I thought, I'm throwing it in there to see what's going to happen, and they did. So, so I'll continue to, it's down to probably, I'd say, for a while there, it was 100% of my time, but it's down to about 50% now. But I don't know that they will give us the salaries back for the visitor center. If you notice, the salary is lower anyway because we have one less person at the visitor center. But the remodel that we're having to do to make it where it's risk management safe for that facility, that's all money that we can get reimbursed from the state for the costs that we're retrofitting the visitor center.
When you say you'd rather have them on salaries so you can get something out of them, are they doing anything? I mean, or is it full admin leave where they're not doing anything and getting paid?
Naomi and I believe Jane, they still monitor the website and the Facebook page and that type of stuff. We do still get inquiries. So what they can do from home, they can do. But the people that, that normally are there giving out visitor information, they're just home.
So, Jody?
Yes?
We're just, it's just an meeting. So we're way over on marketing and promotional for what we expected, but we're under on staff. Or personnel, sorry, not staff, but what's going on on promotional? How come we're so high if we aren't advertising?
That was prior to March, money that was spent from July to February, because that, we pushed last float season real big in the fall.
Perfect, gotcha.
Yeah. And then also, we had, we had a two-year contract at the airport and then another two-year contract with a regional bus service. We had bus ads in Corvallis, in Salem.
Gotcha. I remember the ads too that you were showing us too. So that's perfect. Thank you.
Yep. And then trade shows are going to go way down next year. I don't know if I'm going to be able to do any trade shows next year.
It looks like you budgeted more than you have in revenue. You have. So it's not a balanced budget. And you also didn't make the loan payment. So I'm not sure that this budget is sustainable.
Okay, well, you guys tell me where you want to make up?
Because if I just add the 133 and the 148, that's 271,000. You're budgeting 250, that's $21,000 off. Another five for contingency, another 12, 17, 18, 19,000. And another $30,000 off the budget. Do you think there'll be enough cash carryover from this year to make that up?
I think so, yeah. I think if we reduce if we reduce the reduce the outdoor ads to 10. Because I think the bus ads, I talked to Bob Carson last week. I think the bus ads end at the end of July for this term. And then reduce the TV ads to 15, from 20 to 15, because we're not advertising, I don't think that we're going to be advertising on TV hardly at all. Right now, the only, we're not doing any advertising at all right now. So the internet and digital media, a portion of that covers the infrastructure, but that, like Facebook ads and things like that, we're not running any of those right now. So we could actually reduce that one even more.
What does event support go to, 2440 to 12?
That's when local groups ask for, you know, like fair.
You know, the grant system that you have for local events.
And I did reduce it over this year because I figured some of those events were not going to happen. So I already reduced it from 15 to 9.
So that's an area where you could have discretion if money doesn't come in, you could just not approve.
Correct.
I'm sorry, were we, so we had an idea where we wanted to change something on a previous thing. Were we supposed to say it beforehand?
What would you like to change?
Well, I'm still stuck on the officers' uniforms, and I want them to make sure that they're safe. So I want to up that budget from the 6,000 to 10,000.
Okay.
What page was that on?
I will find it.
Page 14.
So 6,000 to 10?
I think so. I want to make sure we get, everybody has actual good best and they're ready to go. I don't want anybody being
So 2140 to 50.
I support that. You too?
10,04 to 93 uniforms. And that's still, is, if you add 4,000, that's still below what materials and services is for this year. So it's still a flat.
So now we've got to find 12,000 in the general fund. Everybody okay? Anybody, anybody want to oppose that suggestion?
No.
No.
Okay.
Do we have to keep track of these?
Sorry, I'm still learning how to do that.
No, you're doing great.
I'm keeping track so we can go back and figure out where to come up with the money.
Yeah, and or so when we make a motion, we know what we're agreeing to.
Yeah, one of the things we're missing is the beginning and ending fund balance. So we really don't know if we're balanced or not. Do you have it on another page?
Not right now, I don't. Because when I put this together, it was not, like I said, this was the worst budget I've ever done.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't paying close attention to that either. I apologize. That's one of the things I'm usually really good at.
Okay, so you said that's another 10,000 we'll have to find, or who said that?
Well, for 12,000, we have 4,000 for parks, or 8,000 for parks and now 4,000 with these department. So 12,000, and I have, you want the numbers?
Oh, right.
Do you want the numbers?
The line item, you mean? No, I have it. I just didn't have the
Okay. Anything else on the general fund before we return to the community promotion fund? So my challenge and why I'm asking Jody to think this through is that the revenue is at 250,000, and if you add up the expenses, it's at 280,000. I'll use my numbers right. I don't know why a parcel doesn't do that for you.
What's that?
Balance. You're required by law to balance, and it's not requiring you to balance. I don't know why it doesn't do that for you. You should have numbers at the bottom that tell you what the totals.
And I don't know either. Because I have to do a different spreadsheet for the beginning fund and beginning fund balance.
Right, but even this would tell you what the totals are, and it's not.
The totals for?
Your total revenue and your total expense should be at the bottom of every page for every fund. And it really isn't, unless I do my math wrong.
The, on page 23, yeah, the total expenditure requirements is saying 300,910, and the revenue total is 251. And that's not, that's, that's just expenditure and revenue. That's not cash carryover, and that's not beginning and ending fund. That's just what's the budget, what's proposed for revenue and what's proposed for expenditures. So the piece that you're missing is that the beginning and ending fund balance and cash carryover.
Yeah, I just don't get that number when I total it. So I must be doing something wrong. I'm getting 290,000.
You're getting 290?
Yeah, for expenses.
It should be the bottom of each of, where it says total, it should be that number.
Okay.
Let me just do the math real quick.
What it says here is we're off by 49,910. And this is the only fund that I know doesn't have a lot of cash carryover. And that's by design.
That's what?
By design.
Right. But again, it doesn't have the beginning and ending fund balances either because that makes a difference. Okay, hang on just a second. Let me do the math.
So what's the back split?
We're over budgeted by almost, well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, that's what I came up with, Tammy. 300,910 for expenditures. So, so if we're saying, because we don't have the beginning and ending fund balance here in order to balance for tonight to get to 49,910.
So do you want to have us help you balance it, or do you want to make a proposal to us?
Well, I say that outdoor ads, we can, we can reduce that to 10K, which that would be 5,000.
What number, ma'am?
This is page 22, 2440 to 18. I proposed 15,000. We can put that at 10. So that would be 5, 5,000. Okay, the next line.
Well, and that's the part, that's the part you were talking, and that's like for the fair and stuff that we were doing now, but since we're not even having the fair, can we lower that amount as well?
Well, I have reduced it from 15 to 9. So if we want to reduce it more, we certainly can. Because I have a feeling that there's probably not going to be any events for at least half of this year.
There won't be any this summer.
No, so for line item 2440 to 12, that's not just for the event centers fair, correct? That's for all community events?
Yeah, that's event support. That's for grants.
Right.
Yeah. But I just, I just throw out there like the fair or
Right, right.
the fishing derby or, you know.
What would usually come between January and June? I don't think there'll be anything to be there this year.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be anything through 2020. I don't know. I don't know if they're going to do, I don't know.
The wine festival, they come then?
They changed it, right?
They moved it.
Type where?
Yeah.
So that one, are there any other events that you know that would come?
And I don't think they did that this year either.
I don't think so, yeah.
So.
Most contracts should
You'd probably drop it to 5,000 and still be safe, eh?
Okay.
I'm asking, I don't know.
It's, yeah, seems reasonable.
Jody, it sounds like we have a question regarding what contract services are on this.
Contract services are, are, are marketing consultant and then anything else on top of that. So like anytime I have to hire a contractor for, say, I don't want to say graphic arts because we have a different one for that, but that we have to hire a contractor for something. And I don't like not a building contractor.
Is this for like making the, like the visitor center equipped for the COVID type stuff?
No.
Contractors?
Not that kind of contractor, not a building contractor. Somebody that provides Not that kind of contractor. Not a building contractor. Somebody that provides the city a service by contract that's not like a city staff member. Like our marketing consultant we have on contract. But there's other people that we get throughout the year to do certain things related to marketing.
And is that a fixed contract with the agency, or is it as new services are renewed?
The Bob Carson one is a fixed contract.
So that's not adjustable?
Yeah.
And when does that renew?
Three years? Because it just got renewed last year. And it's the same... We've had him since 2012, and it's been the same cost since then. I would say the internet, digital media, we could drop that to 20 and possibly even lower because, again, we're not advertising.
2440 to 23?
Yeah.
And what is the pro graphics service, 272?
That's professional services and graphic services, like when we have, like stuff like that up there on the wall, when they do the type setting and the, you know, putting together photographs, making sub-camera ready so that we can get sent out for printing.
And you reduced the last float event.
The reason for that is we didn't use...
I'm guessing you still have most of your floats.
Yeah. We don't, we won't have to buy floats this year. So that's why I reduced that. Because we shut the visitor center in, right after the first month. So we still had May and April, I mean, March and April of where we didn't give out any floats. So we still have almost, I'm not gonna say all floats, but we still have a good lease supply of them.
Would that work for the brochure distribution on 20-40-214? Is that for your VC? That we're not handing out because they're physically closed?
Well, the brochure distribution is the company that we pay to, you know, like when you go to places.
Okay. I'm just trying to...
Yep.
So if we were to cut staff and you furlough people or laid them off, what would your maximum cost be per year? I think it's a 26-week unemployment payment. That's based on what you made.
I will have to figure it out.
It used to be 8,000, but that was so many years ago, it can't be that low anymore.
How many staff do we have for the visitor center?
There are five part-timers. Three, two...
The manager?
Pardon?
The manager, the manager by themselves making 43,1?
No, we don't, we don't have that position any longer.
Oh, never mind. Sorry, I just thought it was zero.
Yeah. And the staff went up over last year because Naomi is the lead person. She's not the manager, but she's the lead person down there. She works 32 hours a week. And another person works 30 hours a week, and then the other three work between 15 and 20, depending on what time of year it is.
So it looks like the lowest payment is 151 a week and the highest is 648. So the lowest would be 39,26 and the highest 16,848. And then the question is, are people gonna be off work?
Because if you really expect them to do nothing the rest of this year, that's a long time to keep them on full pay.
But I think the issue is that what savings do you gain because we're self-insured?
If the visitor center is closed for two years, it's a huge gain.
Well, sure.
But at this point, we have no opening day in sight. So it's kind of a gamble. We are self-insured. We do have an insurance account, a reserve account for it.
So you're thinking that the possibility of having to pay out for half of, six months' worth of unemployment would still save us even if we just had them out for another couple of months?
It depends on how long they're out.
Right.
It doesn't sound like there's any...
In other words, she wants to do a cost analysis to find out what's her great kicker.
Yeah. And then you've got those other expenses, your medical insurance and, you know, all the other insurances and PERS and all that too.
So if you kept your one staff member that's your lead that handled what needs to be done remotely or online or on the phone or that kind of thing, but you're not actually opening the building, then your other staff who's already part-time would get some unemployment, probably in the lower range between 4 and 10,000.
Probably need to speak up, Tammy.
Are you guys able to hear me?
I can't now.
Okay, sorry. What I was saying is that the low amount for unemployment, based on the calculations I caught online, is about 4,000. And the high end for unemployment would be about 17,000. That's based on the state's 26 weeks that we would have to reimburse, assuming they were laid off that long. So the question becomes, what's the cost benefit ratio to keep them on paid admin leave versus laying them off or furloughing staff? And these are hard decisions, very hard decisions. But would that save us the budget in some way? The city does have an account of, a special fund for unemployment because we know we're self-insured.
What about, I mean, that's for all five employees down there? Tammy?
As I understand it, right now, they are still on full administrative leave.
I mean, it's not 40 hours a week.
Right.
What we did was, I averaged what they made for the last six months, like how many hours they worked in the last six months, and that's what they've been getting. So because the last six months included, you know, uptime and downtime too. So like one person gets 18 hours a week, but Naomi gets 32 hours a week.
But what Tammy was saying is to keep on the lead person to handle anything from home that she can handle and inquiries there. So we're not laying off all five. But for...
I like that idea.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I've forgotten. How much, how much are we trying to, or that we need to balance?
49?
49?
We've cut 20 so far.
That's... Yeah.
20? I don't know. 14, whatever. 15.
I have 5,000 on internet and digital media, 2440 to 23. 5,000 on TV ads, 2440 to 21.
That's the line is.
I'm sorry. The 2440 to 23, what is the new one? Have it be 20K, reduce it by five. And I didn't hear Anthony. I'm sorry. Did you say 49 or 47?
49,000.
I thought it was 49.
Okay.
And that includes not making a payment from when we overspent a couple of years back and are trying to pay that back.
Yeah, which isn't a good...
That's a 49 idea.
And...
And what was the number again? Your number? I think we're trying to cut a total of 49,910.
Basically 50,000.
Yeah.
So far, we've cut 20. So we still need to find 30. Or hope that the revenue is higher than 250. So I would like to make the suggestion that we reduce the marketing and promotional expenses by what we just discussed and revisit the employee situation at the quarter.
I think that's too long. I know it's a hard decision, and I know it hurts. And you're gonna lose staff to other jobs that you have trained.
But it's a long time to pay people for not working.
I also, so my honest opinion is I think our idea of 250 is gonna be low. I think we're gonna exceed that. So I don't think we need to cut it as much as we think we do at 49, but that's just my opinion.
Does anybody else wanna chime in on the concept of furloughing staff?
Well, I would chime in on that. You know, looking at where you're at in tourist season, right? We're a couple of weeks away from August. I honestly don't think you're doing those people any favor by leaving them on administrative leave. If we can staff with one lead person as necessary with reduced hours, I think you're better off just to cut the cord there, incur the costs, because eventually you're gonna have to make that decision anyways. When you get into October and there's no tourism, you're still gonna have to make that decision. So you have three months' worth of costs right now that you could eliminate. Yes, you might be paying them into the unemployment department, but in October, you're not gonna have to make that decision. That's my two cents.
That's a great point.
Does that sound accurate, Jody?
Well, first, I don't wanna, I don't wanna furlough our lien. It went off. But you guys are the policymakers. So it just...
So right now, we've got a couple employees or a few employees that are only at 18 hours that we're paying?
Yes.
They're not working at all.
They probably have another job that they're working as well at this point?
Most of them are retired. Naomi and Ted are the only ones that are, that are working. The other ones are retired.
Okay, then I'm honestly not too worried about going down to one person at 32 hours.
I concur. I think it needs to be done. It sucks, but...
Yeah, I agree.
And we're not the only one to...
This...
Go ahead.
Is there any, is there anything else we can cut additional to that in the marketing and promotional, but in any of the other line items?
Sure. I mean, we can cut all of it.
I think we can. The challenge I'm seeing is that we're gonna be paying people indefinitely that are not going back to work. Because COVID's not going away. As much as we pray and ignore it, travel is down, and we're not gonna be able to staff having strangers come into a building on a regular basis. We're not even opening City Hall. But thankfully, the people that work in this building can actually do something. They're not greeting people all day long and are able to... It sucks. The state's furloughing people. They've laid off a bunch of state police officers.
Okay, so make the reductions in the line items that we just discussed, which comes out to about $20,000, event support, outdoor ads, TV ads, digital, and then the furlough, all but the lead worker.
I think that's probably best. Does anybody wanna make a motion to that?
I was about to say, can I?
Yeah. Make it clear.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to furlough all employees except for the lead at that event center.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So what is, what is it that we're gonna be able to adjust on this 2021 budget?
The line 2440-110?
Right. What is the difference there? If we were just to keep the one, just the lead?